Okay. Welcome to the Wednesday afternoon meeting. I see we're swapping places on item one and two. We have an executive session for collective bargaining. How long, Jessica? Twenty minutes? Okay. So we'll do that first order of business and we'll come back and get into public work. So we'll head to executive session, twenty minutes.
The board is extending the executive session an additional ten minutes until 2:02.
Okay, we're out executive session, no decisions rendered. We'll move on to public works update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Savannah Clement, Public Services. So last week, we talked very briefly about our Hall of Justice HVAC project. And I let the board know that we would have Lauren with Millig here this week to present. And so I'm pretty much going to hand this over to Lauren. I do have some, a packet for you guys. I'll walk around as she's kind of starting. But there will be some time if you guys have questions or comments. And then I had also briefly talked to Lauren. She'd be willing to come back to another meeting if you guys had more detailed questions or after reviewing the presentation, you came up with some additional questions. So that's also out there. So I'll go ahead and let Lauren start.
All right, am I good? All right. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me, inviting and letting me have a few minutes to speak. I prepared a presentation. It's about fifteen or seventeen minutes. I think Savannah put about a half an hour block, so there should be plenty of time for discussion afterwards. What I was, you know, basing the presentation around today is I know that we have two new commissioners. I have, I was here and have presented and talked with the board previously. So I thought we'd start off just by introducing our company and what we've been doing here. Really just give a high level summary of the problems that are going to be addressed by the project and where we are today. Pretty high level. I'd be happy to come back and explain more details, technical solutions, very involved with the project so I can answer some of those questions today or we could get into the nitty gritty details if you'd like. So starting off just with an agenda, I'm going to quickly introduce Millig. I'm going to talk a little bit about our experience and our presence with similar recent projects in the area. We're going to talk about the HOJ project background, the status of where we're at, and then what's coming up next. So we are Millig Design Build. We are a integrated MEP design firm and general contractor. So integrated, that means like our engineers sit side by side and work hand in hand with the builders, with the construction folks on the implementation side. We specialize in projects that improve engineered systems. So that includes infrastructure renewal, building health and safety, and energy efficiency. This is our team members. We're about thirty seven people. We have engineers, folks that work in the construction, like pre-construction, site superintendents, construction managers, and then our client support, which includes accounting and HR and client, kind of client support on projects.
Lauren, I don't want to interrupt your, but what would be the difference between Millig and say the traditional design and construction process? I think that might be an important distinction from what maybe the new board members have seen in public meetings versus kind of how we're tackling it with Millig. Sorry to.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you. So a lot of public works projects are done design bid build. There is, the owner hires a design firm and then they hire, they put those documents out to bid and then they hire a trades or general contractor to implement the project. And then there may be a third set of work with a commissioning agent or other specialty services and the owner holds all those contracts with separate entities. In Washington, one of the most common ways that public entities get work done is through design build or other turnkey, similar method. We are Millig Design Build, we're a design build firm. And so that means that the county holds one contract with us and we deliver all of the design and construction and commissioning of the project, all under one roof. I'll kind of mention this later, but it's all completely open book and which, and it's project managed by the Washington Department of Enterprise Services. So there's DES project manager assigned to the project. All of our, in reality, it acts, it operates kind of like a cost plus fee construction model. So there are all invoices, all timesheets, substantiation of all costs associated with the project. And then there are design builder fees on top of that. And then the, all of the management of the project is completely transparent and open book and all of the cost. And whatever costs aren't spent under the guaranteed maximum price are returned to the county. So the county only pays for actual services rendered and actual construction, direct cost of construction of the project. So it's a design, so it's a design build under the Washington ESPC program moderated by the Department of Commerce. I'm happy to explain more. Sometimes that helps with visuals. I didn't bring those today, but I can if we have a desire to talk through it a little bit more in the future. Okay, so the value, our values at Millig are something that really drive the way we move through projects and the conversations and decisions that are made every day. And so these are the values of our firm. We do right by people, solve problems that other people can't, focus only on what matters to our owners, and never cut corners. So our projects are for people and I think the public works department, and we'll discuss this a little later, but this built, this project has to work for Calhoun County. It needs to fit your budget. It needs to fit your needs. It is your project and we are helping you execute your project. We, we seek to hire folks and have a culture where we solve problems that other people can't. We think if we can do really good work, that's, that's really difficult and we are going to have great success and, and job security. Focus on what matters, that's really important. We see a lot of scope creep, a lot of over design. We see a lot of issues in the industry. We see a lot of issues in the industry around that. And so we really look at staying focused on the primary goals and what the owner needs out of the project. And that's really what we're doing at the HOJ. And then obviously never cutting corners. That's, that's do it right, do it right and do it right the first time. I was just going to touch on our experience. This is a map of Washington. One more slide. Thank you. We do, more than 50% of our projects are with counties. We also do a lot of work with school districts. We're doing work with folks like Washington State University, where we're three quarters of the way done with a five and a half million dollar project there, Community Colleges of Spokane. And we have a lot of county clients. These are folks where we're doing multimillion dollar major facility upgrades. Island County, Spokane County, Lewis County, Skagit County, a lot of kind of medium sized counties in the, in the state. These projects include things like jail, HVAC and controls, and comprehensive courthouse and administrative buildings upgrades. And all of our county projects are executed in existing facilities. So on the next slide, I'm just highlighting one recent project and it's one where it's pretty important to kind of why we're sitting here today. During the competitive selection process for a partner for the county, about a year ago, part of that process when, when Milig was, was being considered was the, our, our work at the Lewis County Jail. So the county sent the Public Works Department and the facilities, some folks from facilities down to inspect that facility and interview the folks at Lewis County. Really strong recommendation from them for the work that we did at the jail was really a good part of why we got selected and why we're here today. So this project was at a 350 bed, fully occupied, 100,000 square foot jail. It was about $5.1 million where we planned, designed and constructed a full HVAC and control system upgrade. Very similar in content, age, equipment types to what we have at the HOJ. There's a quote here from Doug Carey, the Capital Projects Director, kind of just saying that Milig really went above and beyond, helping try to get the best value for their money, writing grants and processing utility incentives, doing stakeholder engagement and communication with the folks that work in the building. And, you know, just a very positive recommendation. On the next slide, I'm just highlighting some of the results of that project. First and foremost, zero accidents, zero safety violations. We have a full-time onsite site supervisor, safety meetings, job hazard analysis, PPE. We did a, we had a couple of really complex crane picks there that went off without a hitch where we had to coordinate with Dairy Gold across the street and the fire department and the city and the county. And everything just, just went great. So this project was completed under budget. Energy savings a year out are exceeding all of the projections. We were able to obtain about $300,000 of outside funding to help support the install of the project and the staff in that building are really happy. So that's kind of a project highlight of, I, I personally managed a lot of that project. And, you know, that's kind of part of what got us, got us selected here for you all. So now jumping into the HOJ project. I started with the, the kind of the problem statement, what really drove the county to want to do something about this building. First of all, it has very high annual operating costs. It costs over $200,000 a year just to pay for electricity in, alone in that building. And there's very excessive annual maintenance costs, kind of a lot of ongoing issues. There's major comfort and code compliance issues. The judges, sheriffs, lawyers, the staffers have poor ventilation, very poor temperature control. You also have, in this building, some Federal Pacific electrical panels that are recalled. They're, they're banned and they have these things called stab lock breakers that are spontaneous fire risk and are a pretty serious issue that needs, does need to get cleared out of that building. They were recalled like a decade ago. So that's kind of a, an issue there. A lot of the controls issues are related to failing the next two bullet points, an obsolete control system at this building and failing equipment. So there is, we'll talk about this on the couple of slides, but there are still pneumatic controls, original to the 1973 construction. And those had a Siemens overlay put on there. And that Siemens system at this point is like 20 years old and it is very outdated. It doesn't, it, they really can't control the building. The building's really running pretty wild. Failed and failing equipment, some examples of that. You've got seized pumps on the perimeter hydronic system. You've got actuators and dampers that have failed. You've got clogged reheat coils. There's really a lot of, a lot of issues within the building. The next two slides have the primary system, describe at a high level, the primary systems and some of their deficiencies. You've got a large 1.2 megawatt electric resistance boiler that produces all the hydronics. You have no natural gas to this building. It's all electric. That boiler's 50 years old. You've got a heat recovery chiller that's in good condition. However, it doesn't operate as a heat recovery chiller. Heat recovery chillers can generate hot water and chilled water simultaneously. This chiller just operates in cooling mode only. It, you, it was a heat recovery chiller because this system used to be tied to a ground source loop. A loop of water from the building used to go under the first street there, across to the field on the other side where there's a ground well. That system has been problematic, had a lot of problems and was non-functioning and has been disconnected from the building at this point. And so that system is non-functional. But you have a lot of remnants in complex hydronics from that system. The building controls, you've got original 50-year-old pneumatics and many, many failures throughout, many, many. You know, you've got big compressors, air compressors, and a lot of leaks in that system that they're constantly chasing down oil in the lines. A lot of failures related to the control system. And then you've got a Siemens digital overlay on just the primary large pieces of equipment, like boilers, chillers and the main air handler. That Siemens system is, has, it needs new firmware, new, new hardware. It's, it's completely out of date. Siemens has been relatively non-responsive as a partner, according to the maintenance department, and very expensive. There's one air handler that serves almost the entire occupied area of the building, like 85,000 square feet. It has one single fan that's 50 years old. That represents a single point of failure. It's in dire need of repair and replacement. There are, the damper actuators have failed. You can see right now a two by four is being used to prop open the dampers to allow outside air into the building. So there's no control over, over those outsider levels. And it, it is set up as a, it was built in 1973. It's set up as a constant volume multi-zone. So there's about seven zones that come off of the primary air handler. And then those go out to hot water reheat terminals that are supposed to heat the air to be the correct temperature for each space. However, there's been a lot of walls moved in that time and a lot of other things done. So thermostats no longer match the areas that the reheat terminals serve and some of the controls have failed completely. So you really have an extensive use of space heaters and portable AC units in the building. The windows don't operate, so people can't get relief from outside. I see people running AC units in the winter when their hat, heat is blasting full, full on and they're very, very overheated in their spaces. So there's, there's a lot of comfort issues in the building and mo, most folks have to have some kind of personal heating and cooling to stay comfortable. That's fighting the building systems. In the former 911 area, you have non, non-functional HVAC down there right now. So with all these problems, we embarked, oh, at least a year ago, I don't have the date on me, to figure out what, what to do. And here are the parameters that we came into this project looking at. We want to lower the operating costs of this facility. We want to improve comfort and the satisfaction for the occupants. We want to eliminate the safety issues and potential insurance fire issues. We want to pursue fiscally conservative solutions that make the most reuse what's there as much as possible and make it functional and maximize external project funding that could come into the county to help support the project. So those are the project's objectives. This is an energy model of the facility. Changing the HVAC system is going to have an impact on the energy use. And so it's an important part of the lifecycle cost assessment of different options. We use this model to model several different potential options of how to upgrade the facility. That's where I can get into more detail if you'd like. That is, you know, an hour presentation in and of itself. But you can skip to the next slide. So I'd be happy to explain more, but ultimately, last summer, the B OCC approved the budget for the HOJ Improvement Project and entered into a contract with Milig via Washington DES for upgrades of the facility, including a new HVAC system with new controls that would give superior individual control of spaces, actual temperature control, improve redundancy and resiliency, and significantly reduce the operating costs of that facility. We also were engaged to design and develop, install a new electrical system and with replacement of the Federal Pacific components and a general modernization of the 1973 electrical components. We also were tasked with exploring, replacing the lighting with LED lighting and potentially some ceiling improvements, as well as pursuing all grants and incentives that could help support the project. All right. So that was the engagement that we began. Well, I've been here a long time. I, I started looking, you know, we've, we've been talking about these, these projects for five or seven years. And, and so this is, this is the, the actual design contract. So what you're looking at on the next slide is just sort of a general overview of how these projects go. The, there's a scoping phase and there's a little green checkmark next to it because we're complete with that phase. We have identified the upgrade opportunities, looked at a lifecycle cost assessment of competing options, done cost estimating, worked closely with the Public Works Department and Facilities Department to select some options to pursue. Then we entered into an IGA contract. That commitment was for $250,000 to design and develop this large, large scale upgrade project. And then we began the design and development phase. Early in that process, we began a, a process of user engagement, really working with the folks in the building. I've, I've said this to Savannah and the county team a few times in our internal meetings, but designing the solution to this project is not nearly as difficult as constructing it. This building houses critical county services. It houses the Sheriff's Department, evidence storage, the, and most importantly, seven courtrooms, including Superior Court and District Court, whose services cannot be interrupted. And design, designing the project is only a portion of, it's really constructing. It's figuring out a construction plan and, and a design that's going to be as constructible and minimizing disruption as soon, as much as possible. So we begin a process of building user engagement. That's where we are now. We're about to enter into a bidding phase. Then there'll be construction. At the end of construction is substantial completion. And overlapped with that is a commissioning process where we ensure that the project is working as designed per contract and a warranty and M&amp;V phase where we ensure that it continues to operate correctly for 12 months after, at least 12 months after construction. So on the next slide, you'll see there's just, we just graded some stuff out and said, okay, this is where we are. We're coming right, we're right at the cusp. This is a great time for a presentation because we're right at the cusp of the end of the design phase and entering into the construction phase. We'll be doing bidding in early, first two weeks of February and then developing the construction proposal after that. So this slide printed weird, but it's correct on the screen, but that's okay. The, the picture got, got kind of messed up, but on the, on the next slide. So the, I just want to highlight user engagement and owner collaboration on this project. Input from the departments and the user groups within the building in collaboration with county staff has been absolutely critical to the development of our design for this project. There's been a lot to learn about the needs and requirements of the different departments, particularly the courts, in order to develop a project that can be installed without disrupting their services. So to date, Milig and our, our design and construction planning group has spent over 2,000 hours developing, designing this project and, and developing the implementation plan for it. We've spent over 100 hours with the county and with user groups. We've been presenting at monthly user group meetings with about 30 leaders of folks that work in the building and that's been going since August. We have spent about 12 hours with the head of the county clerks, the head of the Superior Courts and the District Courts, doing listening sessions, really trying to understand what their needs are and what their requirements are so that we can do this with as little pain, construction with as little pain as possible. And we are meeting with the judges at the end of this month. And we have a project stakeholder event planned for February to really kick off the, to make sure everybody's informed and, and understand what's happening with the project. This is all happening very, very early and very proactively. We are looking at beginning construction in September or October. So we are working early with those teams because there are going to need to be changes. We are going to need to do active construction in the building. So we're working on condensing court schedules to a, a little bit reduced. So we can have some time where we can be in there and disruptive. We, we're going to need to change out the main electrical distribution panel for the building, which will cause like a three to four day power outage for the entire facility where we have IT and server rooms. And we, we, there's a lot of coordination that has to happen and will be heavy. We're, we've been heavy into that process for several months and we'll continue to do so right up until construction begins. Okay, so what are our next steps or what can you kind of expect to see coming up? This is, this is a shot of our BIM, BIM model. This is the, this is the HOJ and that's a, that's, we have, construction in existing buildings is very complicated. There's a ton of existing infrastructure from piping and conduit and electrical to HVAC ducting and equipment. And so we have BIM modeled the entire building to coordinate and de-conflict our, our design project to basically entirely replace the HVAC and electrical system in this facility. So that's, that's a shot of our BIM model. So the next steps are delivering project manuals and bid documents, distributing those to a, a number of local contractors in a, in a few, in several different trades, conducting site walks, doing detailed bid reviews and allowing, you know, some opportunity to update bids, you know, as needed. This is extremely complex, large project, so we need really engaged, high-quality subcontractors that understand the project and we need to be able to compare apples to apples. So this bid product, process is a really big deal. And then development of the final guaranteed maximum price and the construction contract. So we will be providing an open book guaranteed maximum price. And that maximum price includes all design development, construction management, site superintendent, all of the labor, the construction materials, the equipment, commissioning of that system, M&amp;V and guarantee of energy savings. And so that, that will be the next step out of the outcome of the competitive bidding process for subcontractors. And then finally, the other thing that we're simultaneously working on is securing additional sources of exterior funding. Right now, Calhoun's PUD is, we are engaged with them for them to provide about a quarter million dollars to support this project. We are going to be filling out the paperwork and pursuing the Washington Early Adopter Incentive for hopefully in the ballpark of another 200,000. And I'm working with Savannah and the team to develop a Washington Clean Buildings Performance a Washington Clean Buildings Performance Standard Grant Application. It's due January 30th. It'll be for LED lighting and ceiling work that would really help the project. And so we'll be looking for those funds. I don't have it on here, but we're also working with Savannah to support an application to the Washington Association of Counties for about a $73,000 grant to do some auditing work to support clean, clean buildings on some other buildings in, in Calhoun's, not directly to this project. But so several kind of grants and incentives that we're trying to bring, to help bring this project cost down. Okay, so that is, that is the, the high-level overview of a couple thousand hours of work that we've been working on for the last, you know, eight, eight or 10 months. And yeah, so happy to answer any questions or collect information or questions and come back and do another presentation in the future.
You know, the electrical panels that have to be replaced are how many?
There are, there's a main electrical room in the basement and it has large MDPs. Those are out of date and they don't have proper, some of the protections that we would have now. So we're, we're going to rebuild those with a local firm. Across the building, I think there's, there are about 40 panels that have the, the Federal Pacific in them across the two floors.
And they all have to be done in the same four days? I think you quoted three or four days rather than do it by compartment or by?
No, you're correct. Great question. Only the main MDP, the main power to the building, that, that has to be replaced and that'll cause a three to four day out, outage. That has feeders that then break out into like 40 panels across the building. And each of those panels will be replaced in zones. I have a, we have a, a electrical, we're working on developing an electrical map for the IT department that shows what panel serves the receptacles and light circuits for which areas of the building because IT has server rooms and, and other things. The good news is the server rooms in the HOJ are already independently fed by their own air, their own little air handling unit. So we don't have to worry about that. But we do have to either put them on generator backup or make sure that those, they'll be on generator backup during, during the outages. And then the panels will go down in sequence as the mechanical and electrical work of each of those zones is completed. We, the estimates from, I think, the early last spring were nine million total to the county. So we're looking to, it is a high-cost inflation and high construction cost increase environment. We are looking for outside funding and we are making a number of collaborative decisions to maintain and, and get as close to that budget as possible or try to come in under it. We've made a few design modifications pending preliminary cost estimating. Part of our design process is design, cost estimate, figure out where, if we need to get creative. Some of the creative solutions that we've identified include putting it in a, a different type of system, a rooftop unit to serve the courthouses, we were, or the courtrooms. We were going to have that equipment in the hallways outside the courtrooms. And there were some constructibility issues, noise issues, access issues with that. And so we have found a superior system there. We were also going to eliminate this perimeter hydronic system. We cut open the pipes. We, we looked at them. We decided that we can refurbish that system and keep it in place and do everything it needs to do successfully. So we've made adjustments along the way. I think we're feeling pretty good. We have a lot of subcontractor interest in this project. There's a lot of folks who see this as their backyard and they really want this work. So I think we're feeling cautiously optimistic that we're on track. The changes to the design. We meet weekly with the Public Works Department and the facilities maintenance folks. And we sort of discuss, we discuss concepts and design changes on a weekly basis. So we are absolutely doing it very collaboratively. So we sort of talk through different things, identify issues, lay out the pros and cons and the cost implications and then kind of make a decision together which direction we're going to move.
Are there design changes to take into concern the judges' issues about security in the building?
Well, yes and no. We're not planning to move any walls or, and there's not a security budget to do anything specifically for security in this, it primarily HVAC controls and electrical project. However, the judges' chambers right now are very uncomfortable. It's disruptive to them at times. And the courtrooms at times are, are very cold, very uncomfortable. They also have some issues with lighting, some issues with glare and the ability to see their computers. And so the goal is to correct a lot of those issues. Security-wise, I'm not sure that we've had anything that came up specifically except for that the judges will have more individual control over their spaces. So they'll just be more resilient. We will have multiple air handlers instead of just one. And so the, the system itself will be more resilient after this install. So it's generally helpful, but nothing specifically to security.
I'm, I'm getting comments that they can't, online can't hear you, so I don't.
Can't hear who?
Me.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Sorry about that. I noticed that you, you know exactly how much we're spending on our utilities costs in that building. What do you anticipate the energy savings being after this is done?
You know what? I'm going to get you that exact number from memory. I, I want to say it's in the ballpark of $100,000 a year cost reduction. So about a 50% cost reduction. But I will get back to you with that exact number.
Just to add, so if that's just in utility costs, but we also had projected, and again, I didn't bring all the information, but our annual maintenance and upkeep cost was actually a lot more significant than the utility costs to try to just keep the current system band-aided with those costs. And I want to say that was, were we spending, is Sean still here? A million a year? It was a lot, which we can also come back with, but that was going to be a significant savings yearly, aside from the utility savings. It was just the maintenance and upkeep.
That's right. There's been, there's been mold remediation. There have been different issues in the facility that will be prevented and addressed and as well as just a number of, a huge time sink of, of what it takes for, for facilities to kind of try to keep that building, try to keep people like at least somewhat comfortable in the building. So I will get back to you with more specific figures from energy savings and other costs and maintenance cost savings, ongoing savings over time.
Okay. And just one last thing, multiple times you stated that it's 50 years old. It's 50 years old. I just turned 49. Is there something I should be worried about?
Forty-nine years old. Yeah, 49, 73. Some of the equipment, the, the plans are, yeah, it's always, when did it get purchased? You know, maybe it's got a, some of them have a nameplate data from the previous year, but yeah. So 73, there you go.
And just to add, our funding source, we do have the $1 million in ARPA funding, I guess allocated to this project. And then our facilities capital reserves for the remaining, based off of the higher budgeted number that Lauren mentioned.
How much was the ARPA number?
One million.
One million. So with the maintenance costs that we're talking about saving, we could essentially have not recouped it, but made that up in 10 years is what we're looking at.
Generally speaking, yes.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, get those numbers.
Hoping it goes down.
Well, I appreciate your time. I will provide Mike and Savannah with the detailed information. I'm happy to, to tell you more about exactly what we're doing where and what, what design decisions are being made. But it's, it's been a very positive and collaborative experience and we're really spending the bulk of our time at this point planning construction. The, the, the courts cannot have loud disruptive noises during court, while court is happening, while, while witnesses are testifying. And so working around the court system, we spent about three months trying to figure out how to move them out of the building, if that was possible. And we kind of interviewed many local resources, including Kelso School District and the Event Center, and inquired with churches and theaters. That, that did not turn out to be a viable plan. So the plan now is to work around the courts in, in situ, which is, which is, which is a challenge. But we've, you know, we've done this before a lot. We've, we've, I just was telling Savannah that we've done major comprehensive upgrades of four courthouses in the last three years. And so this is, this is what we do. It's not, it's not easy, but it is, this one is, this one is a good challenge. But we feel, we feel confident that, that we're building a really good plan and we have really great collaboration and a great kind of understanding and team spirit with everybody involved in the project. So anyway, happy to come back or, or present more. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share and for the opportunity to, to work on this exciting project.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't need to do this other? Okay. Okay, so we'll move into 2:30 and Kathy will turn it over to you.
Those don't happen here, do they? Those don't happen here, do they? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. And today I'm here to talk about membership dues that, that serve countywide and that are primarily paid out of the non-departmental general fund budget. Next slide. And I have some handouts in case anybody wants one. Countywide dues. The top one is our dues for COG. And it's made up of different pieces. Total is $173,247. General dues is a little over 111, almost $112,000. There's a one-time assessment allocated across membership for 19,000 basically for moving. And then EDD Support Grant match for 20,000 and a Metropolitan Planning Organization Grant match of about $22,000. So that's our largest membership dues. The next one is the Washington Association of Counties. Total there is $45,246. And the general dues makes up almost more than half of that number, which is 26,342. The rest of the pieces are what they call affiliate programs. And some of those are paid by Public Works. The transportation is and solid waste is paid by landfill. The rest of the items on the list are paid by the general fund. And then we also have our Washington Association of County Officials. That's 20,469. Then we have the Calhoun's Economic Development Council for 19,642. And then we have two smaller ones, Kelso Longview Chamber of Commerce for $2,525 and the National Association of Counties, which is 2,109. So in total, these add up to $263,000 of dues. And then I would, thought I would spend a little bit of time explaining some of the benefits and background of each, each of these. The COG, and I gave you a handout from the, the COG. So they, they've been, we've been a member since 1961. They outline, have a very good outline of the benefits, which the first item is there's a medical stabilization pool. And the cumulative benefits since 2010 that they're presenting, that they presented in their handout is about $972,000 of cumulative benefit to the county for participating in that. They also have a transportation planning, direct funds to the county for some various projects, which are on page two of their handout. Totals a little bit over $5 million. Cold Creek Improvement Project, South Cloverdale Road, South Cloverdale Road slash Confor Road intersection, and then Delometer Road Reconstruction. In addition to that, they also provide support in economic development and various projects, that's on page three, that they've awarded for areas in the, within the county, not specifically to Calhoun's County, but within our county. And those specific awards are a little over $5.6 million. And then lastly, they also outline their community development support for inter-agency collaborations, buildable lands inventory and some, and first responders handbook. Are there any questions on?
Yeah, do you want to? Yeah. I'm, I'm looking through this. The county is a participant in the program and experienced savings as an initial result of the program. So what I'm talking about this medical rate stabilization pool. So we got a savings the year we joined it. And is the assumption is that, that we're compounding whatever that savings is over that, that period of time? We're assuming that our rate increase for insurance is the same at everybody else's, right? I mean, if everybody else is 5% and we got charged 6%, aren't they making that up? I don't know that that's the case, but we're, we're making an assumption that our rates are no different than anybody else's and, and we're compounding that initial savings. I'm just trying to be clear on that.
Do we have somebody? I think we have someone here from the COG that may have helped prepare this schedule.
Hi there. Bill Thashing, Director of the Calhoun's Waukeaham Council of Governments or the COG. Commissioner, I'm not sure I'm going to 100% answer your question, but generally speaking, since the creation of the program, national, we've been about half of the increase in cost of insurance for the Kaiser Program that is under this program as the national average. So there have been consistent every year. So there have been consistent every year cost savings for the county and other participants of this program the way it was designed with wellness and other things. And and there is a subs, my understanding is though, that that amount every year is basically the amount that was saved that year as a result of the work that was done under this program. So it's, it's I'm not sure I answered the question, but it is an ongoing every year savings.
You're saying our increases have been about half of the national average? Yeah. I'm not sure what that means locally, but but that would okay. On the transportation planning, direct funds to the county, COG really, you're kind of, aren't like the this transportation, service transportation block grant program and and TAP? These, you're kind of, you're kind of the middleman, aren't you?
We are, the COG.
It's not money you've raised.
It's not money we've raised. It's federal dollars that are allocated to the COG to distribute locally.
Yeah. And how do they do that for, because not every county has a COG. How do they do it in non-COG counties?
Sometimes the county does it, sometimes other groups do it.
But there has to be some type of middle person.
There, there's always a middle person that distributes those dollars, yes. And because the COG is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that responsibility has fallen to the COG Board of Directors.
How do we relate? What do, we pay about 173,000. Is it safe to say we're, we're the one that pays the bulk of things in Calwitz County?
You are the larger, largest in the county. City of Longview is not too far behind you on on most of those, but.
And but the majority of the benefits probably go to the cities? Because that's where the, that's where the population is.
Yeah, that would probably be accurate. There are some programs that the county might benefit more than the cities. But generally speaking, it's more of the dollars, like the economic development dollars, have gone to the cities or the ports. So but those dollars benefit county residents across the board.
Yeah. I, I get that. And the only reason I bring it up, and and I don't necessarily mind, but I hear all the time how the county never helps the cities. And so when I see things where I know that we're helping the cities, I like to to have that acknowledged.
There, there's no doubt the county helps the cities in my mind. So I, I, I don't disagree with you on that one.
Yeah, I, I, as most know, since I've become Commissioner, I attend a lot of the city council meetings. And the reason behind that is, once they got used to me being there, is I'm really, I'm listening to see if there's something that pops up that maybe we can, we can help them with. I'm not as an example, the Catlin Project for Kelso came up in their city council. I talked to the other commissioner and said, you know, this looks like, do you want to listen to that? And so we ended up in some money for that. So that's really the reason. I, I'm just trying to get across the point because I, I hear so many times that we're not helping and and it's simply not true. We're always looking for ways to help. And this is, this is one way. I know we're paying the majority of this for this county. And I know the cities take a lot of the benefit of that. And I'm, I'm fine with that. It just, I guess I'm just wanting it recognized at times.
So on the medical stabilization pool, I might understand that we have essentially over the last 15 years, saved just under a million dollars.
On the medical rate stabilization, that's my understanding, yes.
That's an estimate built on whatever parameters they use, but.
And our representative on that from Gallagher put together those numbers. Our insurance rep that serves the county, the COG and and the other participants there. He could not be here today, but would be happy to have him come back and get into the gory details of of that savings. But I do not have that expertise to dig too deep into it.
Now, I know we have departments that utilize COG for the transfer, let's go back to those TAP funds and those type type of things. So I know we, we take advantage of using you as a middleman. I did, at the Kelso Council last night, it came up. And I did have a question for you on that. It's a little different than this here. But it talked about, they were, they had their lobbyists for the state lobbyists there, and they were going after some dredging funds through COG?
What?
About that, because I don't see that happen.
It's, it's not dredging funds necessarily. It was operational funds to assist with the Spirit Lake-Tuttle, Calwitz River Collaborative ongoing operations, which may lead to dredging somewhere down the road. But it, it, like you said, probably won't lead to dredging anytime soon. So but it's.
Because the way he presented it, it sounded like we were asking the state or Kelso was asking the state for dredging funds.
I, I think it's really money for operations to help support the Spirit Lake Collaborative, is what the ask was.
Just questions I had on on COG.
I, I got one more, maybe a couple. With some of these bullet points here, are some of these things, these funds and these awards and things that we've got, are we not able to get those through other means and other departments?
The surface transportation block grants are distributed by the COG Board of Directors. And so they come through us, period. The economic development dollars are distributed technically through US EDA Office. But they, no one in the county would be eligible for those funds without the COG's Economic Development District and the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that we create every five years. So could it be someone else? Yeah, but at this point, it is the COG that makes us eligible for those EDA dollars.
I've always, I just had an opinion of the economic development side of things that be focused on bringing in businesses and and industry to help in the cities, the counties, specifically the whole county. I don't, am I missing something in here that tells me that you've brought any businesses or help support businesses into the county?
Let me take a step back. And we've got the Calwitz Economic Development Council, which is also on the list today for funding, and the, what the COG's Economic Development District. And there's two separate distinct functions between those two. The CEDC's role is the business development, business attraction.
Okay.
The economic development role, economic development district role is more from a planning perspective. We get planning grants from the federal government to help spur and and look forward to economic, put together economic development plans to build a stronger community, stronger region. We have, as far as implementation elements that we've taken on, because we don't want to duplicate what CEDC is doing. So we've been focusing in on some of the background economic development issues like childcare, building the entrepreneurial ecosystem, trying to help small businesses grow and prosper. Some of those types of things, we've looked at where CEDC is actually working with businesses that are here to help them grow and expand, the larger ones, and then also working to attract new investment to the community. So there is a separation that I think is fairly clear. I sit on the CEDC Board. CEDC President sits on the COG Board. So there's that communication and and ongoing back and forth from my perspective that avoids duplication and and hopefully keeps us all focused on building a better community. Did I answer the question?
I believe you did an excellent job. Thank you.
So essentially, the COG is a broker to us for these services that you guys have consolidated.
I, I like to call us a catalyst in many cases. You know, we're out stirring things up, trying to make things happen that are positive for the cities, counties, and other members. And we do have school districts, fire districts, water sewer districts as members of the organization. So we're constantly, as, as Commissioner Dahl said, I, I tend not quite as many meetings as he has lately. But I try to attend a lot of those meetings and listen and learn and and watch for opportunities for cooperation and and regional cooperation to move things forward that aren't moving forward today. So.
But I thi, I think in a nutshell, you're real, real, real close. If you didn't, if we didn't have COG, we'd have to find, in your terms, another broker. And I don't, I'm sure there'd be some kind of cost associated with it. I couldn't tell you what that would, would be or or whatnot. But you have to have or some, it's, it's almost like in in Gina's world for, to get some of the services, they have to go through some other program to get there. You just, it can't be a direct thing. And and if you want my personal opinion, I think it's set up that way. They protect themselves. But, but if you didn't have the COG, you'd have to have something. And I don't know what that would be, but you'd have to have that function.
So I guess for, for me, the bottom line is, is for the dues that we pay, do we get the value that we need? I mean, do we get more value back than what we're putting out every year?
Well, that's where I was, I was kind of going. And once again, you're, you're just, I'm just going to give you my personal opinion. I, I don't think the county gets back so much, but we do help. It does help, help the cities. And I'm okay with that to a point personally. I mean, everybody has to make their own decision on that. But, but I, I know that we, we pay the, the brunt of this thing, but it does have some benefit to the cities. And I'm okay with that because they're in the county. And I do like to take care of them within, or help them within reason, yeah.
If I can add one more thing, Susan Eugenous is here, I think. She's still here. Yeah. So I'm going to talk about her since she's sitting behind me. But she, she approached the COG a few years ago when a new federal program came out called the Safe Streets for All Program with New Funding Source. And she encouraged the COG to apply for money to do comprehensive safety action plans for the county and and the cities within the county. So we went ahead and applied for the money. The, the county actually paid a portion of the match dollars for those federal dollars. The cities paid a portion of the match dollars for that as well. But we completed the comprehensive act, uh, safety action plans in conjunction with the county and the cities, probably saving Susan 100 hours. So, so by Susan coming to us, asking us to help get a safety action plan in place to make sure the county was eligible for safety dollars moving forward so that we could make safety improvements to county roads and streets, the COG stepped in, did the safety action plans with cooperation and and support from all of the agencies, and kept, you know, each of the cities from doing their own safety action plan, keeping the county from doing their own safety action plan. So we have a, or we will at the end of next month, have a comprehensive safety action plan for Calwitz County, the cities within, plus Rainier, Oregon, which is part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization Planning Area. So there's official, hopefully there's some efficiencies in this extra layer that that you're dealing with. The, but we do, we are responsive and and try to do things that add value to our member agencies.
Is Safe Street, is that Longview's new bike lanes and all that? Don't tell me we had a hand in doing that nonsense.
We probably did way back when.
Ask if you don't want to know.
But this is, this is, moving forward from here, what kind of safety improvements need to be built into the system to protect all users of the system? So it will include bike and pedestrian facilities as well, moving forward.
Now, our particular district includes how many counties? I know it's more than just us.
Correct. So the, the Council of Governments by federal statute and with the concurrence of the governors of Oregon and Washington is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So that's the, the Longview Metro area is where that started years ago. Then state law came into play in 1990 and created a thing called Regional Transportation Planning Organizations. And that law basically says that if you're an MPO, which the COG is a Metropolitan Planning Organization, then you're automatically the regional transportation planning organization for that region or that county. And all of those were encouraged to take on additional counties and and have regions larger than just the MPO county in most cases, or at least initially, that was the, the idea. So in 1990, we partnered with Lewis, Pacific, Waukeaham, and Grace Harbor Counties to create the Five County Regional Transportation Planning Organization. So yes, we do reach out well beyond Calwitz County in our efforts. More information than you wanted.
I was just trying to give them a picture that you're.
I appreciate it. And you might need to hear it two or three times before you get it all. So I'm happy to sit down again and and visit with you guys, as I've already offered. And I just haven't followed through yet to, to set a meeting.
Any other questions on that one? I think the two big ones on the rear are really COG and the WASAC. The others are smaller.
But I don't want to belabor it. If you're done, I'll, I'll go back to the other seat and let you guys move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So the next membership that we have, and I have a slide on that too, is the Washington Association of Counties. It was created in 1906. It serves 39 counties. Voting members are commissioners. And then the other affiliate associations basically have their own billings, like I said. Only two of those are actually billed to outside the general fund. Everything else is paid from the general fund. And they serve as a forum to build a statewide county legislative agenda. And they have lots of information on their website about that right now. And one of the items that I plucked from their website is their support of the Critical Facilities for Rural Counties, which we're, we qualify for that. And, and then they have additional member resource. And I used an example. They have a commission, they post a Commissioner's, County Commissioner's Guide on their website. That membership in total is $45,246.
I sit on that legislative part of that. And I think the other, I know Commissioner Pearl, I think Mr. Rader also kind of sit in and listen to some of that. So their main focus really, when they get busy, is during legislation time. And the purpose is the counties come together and come up with a combined legislative agenda that they will pursue. And not all, all counties agree with everything on it. I certainly don't. There's things I vote, know against all the time, but I'm voted, voted against. I'm outvoted. But they try to take all, I, I'll give them this credit. They try to take issues from all the counties and see if they can make that, that work in there. They have engaged in a lawsuit on behalf of the counties in the past. What else to? They do, they do offer some educational resources. You guys have been to, I think, one of those.
Yeah, part of their bylaws, you have, they have to have 85% agreement for anything that they will pursue with the legislature because that, that's just, their bylaws says 85% or they don't touch it. They leave it to the individual counties to be involved and to represent themselves if they don't have that 85% approval.
They work real hard on trying to find more revenue for counties. They work real hard on trying to They work real hard on trying to make sure we don't get hit with unfunded mandates. It, it's hard to do. So, you know, I'll give them that. I'm more of a person, I don't need any more laws. I just need them to start getting rid of some of those and they, they don't work very hard on that. But that's because the majority of the counties are not telling them to.
Want to borrow my red pen?
Yeah. I saw, I saw a stat of four western states, Oregon, Oregon, Washington, Montana and Idaho. And like Idaho to date had, I think, 41 bills introduced. So far in Washington, there's over 900. It's just.
Yeah.
It's nuts. Anyway, I, they do try to provide a collective voice. They have lobbyists that go up there. We can, we can go with them anytime we want. If we want to show up on there, they, they welcome that. So they are engaged in that. If we didn't have them, we have pretty good communication with our, our representatives and our senators. I think we're, we're, we have the ability to run up. It's just more of a collective voice. If you're just looking for my two cents. I wish you'd work on some non-regulation things, but that's, that's my personal wish.
Well, they're, they're trying to fill a bunch of, of empty spots right now because of a new commissioner rollover.
I think through, through that organization, I also read that they promote the counties making recommendation for statewide boards and committees.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good point. They, they do have a hand in some board appointments. I know they work, I think they have a hand in appointing some people to crab. They recommend, I think they actually have a hand in appointing to the building in code. I think they have, so yeah, that's a good point. They do, they do get asked on some of those, but I can't give you the whole list of who they are asked on.
Okay, if there's no more questions about that one, the next one we'll jump to is Washington Association of County Officials. And for this one, we have at least seven officials, elected officials that are represented by this association for us. The total bill is $20,469 annually. And I, being the little accountant in me, I divided that by seven and said, it's less than $3,000 per office. They, they list as their priorities legislative advocacy, education and capacity building, outreach and engagement. And then I, I have at least three elected officials here. I have Emily who's willing to come up and speak and our treasurer Deborah Gardner. And then I see Carolyn is also here, our auditor. But all three of those are represented by this organization.
So, so in a, a short description, what's the difference between the two? Why do the two different organizations exist instead of one?
The one is for countywide and it's more for commissioner level representation and participation. And then this one is more for individual functions and offices of the county, the elected officials.
Electeds within the county?
Right.
Okay.
So everybody but you guys are on Waco and you guys have your.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
Yeah, you just don't hear my voice. Yeah, so everybody but the commissioners are on Waco and then you guys have your own representation.
Okay.
And you use them often?
I do. I was gonna say Deborah can speak to it also, but just as an example, in the last, well, a little over a year, Department of Revenue stopped running our education program for the assessors association. And because we're accredited through the state, we have to have continuing education. So that fell to me and that was a two persons full-time job that got dumped on my plate. And I said, I don't know how to manage all of this with my normal duties. And Waco stepped in and they have been amazingly helpful. They run to the bank for me up in Olympia. They manage a PO box and send me everything. They have started hosting the classes. One of the things I noticed immediately was that we were paying too much money for renting facilities when as government we inherently have facilities. And so they're helping coordinate where we can have free classes instead of paying for facilities. They have moved towards helping me find sponsorship for classes so we can actually save all the county's money instead of us paying for our students to attend the classes. They're looking for ways for us to not have to pay for that. And that's on top of all of the legislative support. I think Deborah had some examples of how helpful they are with that.
Yeah, as a newly elected official, you come in and you don't know all the roles and all the things that you need to be handling. And, you know, we have our own association, like I, I'm in, involved in the Washington Association of County Treasurers. And we, I pay a dues to them. It's only $200 a year, so it's very low. But then the Waco will help out our separate associations with legislation that, you know, we need help with. So one of the treasurers in the state is our legislative chair. She got, you know, asked to be the legislative chair. She, if, if you don't know anything about all this legislative, the process, you need help. And Waco's there to help guide us with how we deal with the legislator, legislation, how to write white papers, you know, to explain what you're trying to get across, to talking to the representatives, introducing you to representatives. You know, they're there for all of those steps. If there's a, a bill that pops up that has to do with treasures, they notify us and say, hey, this is going to be a hearing. You want to be on there for support or be on there against it? They're, they're watching out for those types of things that, you know, I don't have the time to do that or I'm not involved in all the legislative items. So they're there to assist us with all of those types of things as well. And every, they have a, it's a way that they have their newly elected conference. So if you're newly elected, everyone goes and you get to learn about the other elected positions. They have different classes that you get together with the other organizations and talk about. They even have, they, they had one on, you know, how to speak with your commissioners and they had a commissioner and a treasurer out there talking back and forth and different things. So there's just a lot of education for those types of things for, for people that aren't, you know, experienced with all the things that we need to do as elected officials.
So I did write down some statistics for you guys, just to give you an example. So of the staff we have up there, they have a combined 60-year experience in the legislation. So that is very helpful. And as you guys mentioned, they've introduced what, 900 bills so far? We can't track that. We can't decide what, when to testify, when to not testify, what needs help. And our job is to represent the citizens as well as we can. And that means having some ability to track that because there's a lot of bills that get passed that are not in the best interest of the citizens. We also have to watch for bills that are getting passed that are, like Dahl said, unfunded mandates. And then also ones that go against something that we're doing. So like when they passed the McCleary Act for funding for schools, it still passed even though the assessors were against how it passed because they were introducing a rate based into a budget based system. But that's our job is to at least speak up and say, do you understand what's happening here? You're passing this, but you need to understand how it's going to play out in real life. It's really easy to pass something on paper that is difficult to implement. But Waco has helped us pass 41 of the proposed priority bills since 2015, which is a pretty good number. Last year in '24, four out of the seven priority bills passed. And when I say priority bills for Waco, that's voted on the membership at large. So everybody gets to vote on what's a priority for the Waco body because that's assessors, treasurers, clerks, auditors, coroners, sheriffs.
Prosecute.
Prosecuting attorney. So everybody gets a say. And one of the things I like about it is we all get one vote. It's not like King County gets 50 votes and I get one vote. We all have a say. So that's one thing. They are into education. They have an education hub that provides 62 different trainings available online. Every second Wednesday of the month, they do what's called a packed lunch series. And I'm on their education committee, so we pick topics that will be of interest to other electeds. So we've done staff performance analysis, ethics, cybersecurity, digitalization of records, recruiting and retaining employees, managing stress, just to name a few of the things. They do help with like press releases, social media content, all that stuff for all the affiliate programs. And they have a yearly conference that allows cross-affiliate collaboration, communication and training. So a lot of times the assessors talk to the assessors, the treasurers talk to the treasurers, but there's a lot of things that touch both groups. And so having the ability to get all the people in the same room at the same time and kind of hash through some of the challenges is a really beneficial thing for all parties, I think. Any other questions?
With your department specifically, Emily, what would you say if you had to go and hire out everything that you just described would cost us?
So much more than we're paying, so I don't know. I don't know how much a lobbyist costs because I've never hired one. If I were to run that at half the cost of the attorneys that typically get used, we would get maybe four or five hours worth of a lobbyist for the price it costs us for the year, so.
And that's representative of seven of you?
But at the same time, it's a small group working for a big collection of people, right? And so if we were to have something that was really important to us, we would have to decide whether that lobbyist that's split amongst all seven groups can facilitate that or if we would need to hire an outside lobbyist, depending on the, the weight of what we're trying to pass through. If it's just a little bill, I think it's great. If we were trying to pass, you know, invention of the wheel, we would probably want more help with that.
Are you done?
Yeah.
I wasn't going to say anything in this meeting, but I wanted to give you some additional ideas and thoughts on this topic. And since this was added as an agenda item, things have progressed with my association, Washington State Auditors. We had an executive board meeting last week to authorize the spending to hire our own lobbyists because we have outgrown Waco. So when Waco says that they represent all affiliates, that is not, not true. It, Waco does provide the opportunity for each affiliate to propose two priority bills. That, that's wonderful and we get a lot of support on that. However, our problem isn't the same as say, the assessor or treasurer. Rick was talking about 900 bills being dropped. Well, 40 of those are in elections alone. Is Waco representing us in, in helping defend ourselves against those bills? No, they can't. That's why we have to hire our own lobbyists. And so far, we set aside $15,000 for this legislative session. So who picks up the cost? The counties. That'll be allocated between all counties based on population and the counties will pick up that cost. You asked a, a really good question. I think it was Steve. What's the difference between Waco and WASAC? That, and the answer you received, I think, was incomplete. There isn't a difference. The, the idea of merging WASAC and Waco is not new. It's been proposed multiple times in the past. Both organizations want their own autonomy. However, in a time when we are facing budget shortfalls and we are asking people to be more efficient, now is the time to, to say, hey, put your money where your mouth is. Why are you, if, if you look at their number one priority legislative, county legislation is their number one priority. They even share a building. Why aren't we working together pooling our resources and being more efficient? And I'm going to add one other issue. Not all counties pay for Waco. Several counties have bowed out. So I, I decided to come up here and speak about this because if we don't speak about it now, I know we are going to be revisiting this next year. It's going to be much bigger next year. Because the dues for some of our counties that are larger than us, I'll, I'll use an example. Benton County's bill was $120,000 for Waco, their portion. It's not affordable. It's not efficiency. And they're not getting the most bang for their buck. So while they are serving part of the affiliate, I guess it's the efficiency of some of their claims. First of all, the merger between Waco, Waco and WASAC, that should be first priority. And the second priority, the billing method of saying that you're including all affiliates, you represent all affiliates equally across the board and charge all of us the same. We all have various needs and many of us don't participate because unfortunately we have more needs than they can provide.
Is there, is there fee proportionate to the population density in the county? Is that how that, that, how they come up with what we pay?
Yeah, amongst the state. So it's allocated amongst the different populations.
You see that in WASAC too. King County is no longer a member of WASAC. They don't pay the bill. Pierce and Snohomish are looking at that also because their bill is, is pretty high.
Those are the discussions that I'm talking about, that I don't want to see these organizations go away. They do good things. What I would ask for is for them to try to create better efficiencies, recognize that counties are struggling rather than, you know, offering big raises for their staff and growing their services when we're leaving. Try to find efficiencies and, and helping us counties through it. So if it doesn't happen this year, I'm assuming that they're going to be forced to make some decisions next year because I know some counties are definitely looking at backing out because of the costs. Did you have anything else for me? I think I've said everything. I'm not, I don't ever want to speak against my fellow electeds. My issue is with two government organizations that do the same thing and charge us. It's like double dipping just because they want to maintain their own autonomy. So it's my issue.
I appreciate your comments.
I didn't know that was what we were talking about. I thought we were talking about our dues or I would have been a little bit more prepared for that.
Well, the, the reason we're paying the dues is for what? I mean, I want to know what the value is that we're putting money into an organization for what? And what, I mean, what are we getting back out of it? If there's a positive reason for us to be involved and, and we're getting our money's worth, that's what I want to hear. That's what I want to know. Educate me.
You, you can look at it this way too. We're, we're basically paying 60, about $65,500 for lobbyist activity on behalf of counties through those two, two organizations.
Maybe you guys should join ours because yours seems expensive.
Well, one lobbyist a year, if he's full-time for somebody, is probably more than $65,000. Just in all honesty.
I would, yeah, I'd bet on it. I'd make a pretty filthy bet on it.
And I can tell you, WASAC I think has three, maybe four. I don't know what Waco has.
We have four full-time and then we have a lobbyist.
So if you look at it that way, the cost of combining as a group is more, more efficient. You can certainly do it alone. It would cost you something.
I think it'd be a good conversation to find out if the two organizations could be combined and improve efficiency.
Yeah.
Especially with trying to be dollar conscious in this day and age.
I, I can tell you this, what we pay for the lobbyist firm that we, we hire to keep us representative in, in Washington DC is 80, 85 a year.
And he's a lobbyist from which of, for who? For who?
Now you're gonna make me recall the name. CFM, yeah. And they have a group of, the one, uh, I'm most familiar with is David Hodges, who we work with quite a bit, but there's a group of four or five in that group that kind of keep track of us and and work. The issues, we tell them to work back there for us. And so just that that one firm alone, we pay eighty to eighty-five for.
And so
So you'd be, if we did the same thing at the state, you'd be right, I would guess we'd be in that in that ballpark.
With none of the other perceived benefits.
Right.
And ju- and so that only represents us?
Well, they represent other firms and stuff too, but but they they represent Callis County on the issues we give them.
Okay.
Well, and I do think this is a good conversation to have with Waco and your organization, and maybe there's potential there. Um, but as far as funding twenty-twenty-five, I would hate to cut myself off at the knee with hopes that in the future we can combine things. Um, as it sits today, this is important to many of the elected officials.
Yeah. Well, I think Carolyn was getting to the point where these two organizations need to get a little more real and have a conversation.
As she said, they're in the same building. Um, I don't see that this would be a hard conversation for them to have.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a, it's a very valid point, and I think what we'd be dealing with is uh egos, maybe, is what the what the problem is, and that's not something we're gonna be able to solve here. I just wanna make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck just due to the fact that dollars don't come easy uh today, and
Agreed.
Um, if you guys feel that this is a benefit that you're getting, and the twenty thousand dollars um is a small portion, or i- it's a small amount of money for what you're receiving. That's why I asked specifically your department. If you felt that it was it was worth um us spending that, then that's what I wanted to know.
And the other electeds do care about this. Uh, Ryan's in court today. Stacy was on another meeting, and then Dana and Brad are also out of town. So it's not that they didn't wanna be here. Uh, they just had other commitments. They couldn't be here to talk to you guys today.
Well, and I know um with Stacy, the clerk, Stacy Michael Buston, Dana, I mean, they didn't tell me to speak for them, but I have talked to them, and then they they both value um this organization, and they they need it as well. As far as the sheriff and the prosecutor, I'm not sure about them. And I do understand what, you know, Carolyn's saying with the um elections. They have so many more bills that that they need that extra help. Um, that they're hiring their own lobbyists, their association, and I don't know the history of these two organizations and them um combining and all. I haven't been involved in any of that.
Well, this just, right, it's meant this is just research, education, and good conversation. We're not gonna snap our fingers and change anything.
Yeah. But it gives me room to go back and at least have conversations because that is not something I was privy to before. Um, that conversation had not been had in my presence, so.
Well, I think I if if you guys as a cumulative whole um went back and had this conversation, it would it would send a message because a couple of counties have already dropped out of WASAC, and that has sent a message, and I know that they're looking at revamping how they collect their dues because of the fact that people are leaving the organization.
Yep, and I plan on being in Olympia all week next week, so I'll have a meeting with them and see.
Okay.
You guys done with us?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Better question is, are you done with us?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, the next um the next largest um membership is the um Calhoun's Economic Development Council, and that's a little over nineteen thousand dollars. And I I did have like a little handout, um, I cut and pasted from their website, um, some information. I know that their person is out of the office right now. Um, and so not available to be here to speak on their behalf. Um, they were established in nineteen seventy-nine. Um, they promote job creation and investment. Um, and I added this little blurb, job creation and new investment. In our county would equals revenue that's generated basically um through property taxes, sales taxes, things like that, so um generated for our county services. And they are designated in the past, and they've sent out a a request recently, as recent as, I guess, yesterday or today, that um they're requesting that we designate them as um an associate development organization, so they can submit that to the Department of Commerce, and that's for a two-year period.
Yeah, they have been acting as the, I called them this morning because I said I haven't seen this before. And they've been acting in that capacity for us. We just have to renew it every couple of years through the Department of Com- Commerce. So it's a function they have, they have been doing for us, yeah.
And then um they've also, and I just wanted to add that we, as a county, have supported their organization, their operations uh with fifty thousand dollars annually um for their personnel to promote tourism and job creation.
Right.
Um, in addition to paying this nineteen thousand dollars in membership dues, and that's that's from our rural public facilities um sales tax credit.
Right. You know, I I I've kind of known them since since back in the day when I was with US Bank and they had an office in the US Bank Bank Building, and I know they they uh speak for Ted. I know they they work hard. Their biggest their biggest hurdle to overcome to getting people into Callis County is not Callis County. It's the state of Washington. It's every time they bring somebody in, the state of Washington files suit, you guys see it. And that's the biggest detriment. So I I think they're, in my personal, once I'm just giving you a personal opinion again, I think they work hard to bring it in, and they're fighting the same things we fight, is we have a an overbearing state trying to determine what's best for us down here and not allow some of this stuff in. I think Ted and and his staff do a pretty I know they're busy and they do a pretty good job. They talk to a lot, a lot of people and try to promote our area. We got a lot of great assets to promote. We're we're, we got a port down there. We have goodness, we have a place that has a dock you can
Yeah.
You can't, you can't do that anymore. We have an airport that'll handle jets, and we have a lot of benefits. We're by I five. It's just that we get ram-rodded by this
And we got rail.
Lot.
And we got rail.
Yeah, and we got rail. So I I I don't personally have any, my personal opinion again, I don't have any trouble with this. I think they're doing the best they can running into the same roadblocks we run into.
Do they, are there uh, are there projects or anything that we can look at historically that we can quantify to say this is what was generated by this council?
Well, I know they worked a lot with uh West Rockwell and that new plant out there. Uh, when I went out and visited the the people that make the the pipe and stuff, it it used to be, it's in the mint farm. It used to be a uh metal resalvicing plant. They worked a a lot with to bring those into to town and and uh make the plastic pipe, you know, like the culvert type thing.
Yeah.
Best is a better way to say it, the culvert type stuff.
And when they had their annual meeting, um, they had a lot of informational literature about all the different companies that have expanded or um come to the county, so.
Yeah, not having much experience with a lot of these groups. Um, I know that in the private sector, a lot of these things turn into social clubs so that we can just go, you know, have a reason to get together and have a meeting and stuff. So it it's good that you have experience with them, Rick, to to say, yeah, this is a good, a good value for us.
And and uh and I think Bill can probably uh confirm this. It it's just not uh public officials that are part of CEDC. There's actual business owners. Uh, uh, Brian Magnusson would be one. He had the cable. He was a builder in the past. The the Lemons were part of that. So it it's it's a good combination of actual enterprise and and government all trying to work work together. I think I didn't misspeak there, right?
You are correct.
Yeah.
And then I didn't have much information on the um Chamber of Commerce or the National Association of Counties. Those were very small items. So these bills, um, we're receiving these, we've already received a couple of them, so that's why I'm bringing them here today to ask for permission to be able to release payment, process payment. And I can, if you wanna go down the list and say approved, or if you wanna just say all of them are approved, I don't know how you would like to do this.
Once again, I'll just reiterate that we did include these in in the budget.
Yes, they're in the budget.
And and the former commissioners just put the stipulation that that this new commission say, keep it in the budget and go ahead and pay. And I think that's what you're looking for today.
Right.
So if you have exceptions or you wanna take them individually or just en masse, I don't, I I'm open to however you if you're comfortable with what we're doing here. Some of these you would have to find a way to replace some of the stuff before you got rid of some, to be honest with you, right?
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like we benefit from them in one form or another.
Yeah.
So.
It, if you're well, I'm chair, I'm really not supposed to do that.
I I've got no heartburn. We're just leaving it the way it is.
Okay.
Me neither.
So I, what I'm hearing is, let's just go ahead and put them in the budget and go ahead and pay?
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yep, that's what I needed. I was instructed to not pay any of these bills until we went over them and the benefits. Um, so that the county commissioners can understand why we're paying these membership dues.
I think over this next year, we'll get more exposure to things and and it'll I think that was really the purpose of it, is the other two just wanted to make sure that they got some additional exposure to what we do. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy.
Gina, I know you won. I know you've been waiting patiently, so. It, don't you have a
Yeah, um, I'm
Are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna write it out. They told me if I was a few minutes late, don't worry about it. So I'm gonna just, I'll go over there when we're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Gina James, Health and Human Services. I just wanted to touch base. I'm trying to retrain myself to come and bring things to the new board ahead of time. I know we've, I've talked to both the new commissioners a little bit um about making sure we get information ahead of folks. I so we do have um some upcoming contracts that we've started some conversation about, so I just wanted to quickly circle back. We do have one of these items on the agenda for next week on Tuesday. Down at the bottom under Health, we have Amendment One to our Consolidated Contract, so I wanna highlight that one in particular. So that's on the agenda for Tuesday, and I just, I'll just throw it out there that if we need more time for questions or discussions, we could bump that out. Um, but I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention today, have some brief introduction conversation about it, and then obviously, I'll be back on Monday as well for the Agenda Review um meeting that we can have some more conversation. Of that Amendment Number One to the Consolidated Contract, that's our contract with the Washington State Department of Health. Um, we just entered into a new contract cycle with them. It's a multi-year contract, so the previous board just signed that contract in December, I believe. It was essentially just the general terms and conditions of that contract. And then what they do is they issue these amendments that add funding and add scope of works connected to the funding. So what you see listed here, the foundational public health services, the emergency preparedness and Group B, those are the what is coming in Amendment Number One, and you can see the funding um connected to those on the far right column. Um, it's we're not seeing anything different than what we've seen in years past. It's kind of our standard allocations. The emergency preparedness um funding, I'll point out, it's a partial allocation. We see this often with this contract where they'll issue um part of the funding in the first part of the contract cycle, and then when the fiscal year changes over, they'll issue the second allocation, um, making up the annual amount. The contract runs on the calendar year. The money runs on the state fiscal year, so it's a little bit wonky. This whole contract is a little bit wonky. Um, so I wanted to, like I said, that this amendment's on the agenda for Tuesday, so I wanted to make sure to just kind of get some information out, let you know I'm available for any questions or discussions. You're welcome to give me a call. I'll also be back on Monday, as I mentioned, for the Agenda Review Meeting. Um, so we can talk more about it then, too, and if we want to bump it out of ways, we could certainly do that, so.
So is this, i- is this mainly just for bookkeeping purposes? I mean, and you're just letting us know it's not gonna really alter any services or anything like that?
No, and what we, no, it's not gonna change anything we're currently doing. The public, the foundational public health services funding, that's the one point four million. That 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 amount is is newer to us, and we, and you have probably heard some conversation earlier in the year about that, that what we don't spend at the end of the fiscal year, we return to the state. Last year, we returned, I think, over eight hundred thousand dollars, so all of that funding, uh, you know, we have those conversations here and with Board of Health about what we do with that funding moving forward, so.
So in the
I think you gentlemen got questions on that during the day, did you not?
The uh under current allocation, it's got a six-month span there.
Mm-hmm.
That one point four doesn't get paid out in that full six months? I mean, that it's not gone in that six-month period?
So, right, so at the end of the fiscal year, so that the end of June, if we've not spent the whole one point four, we will return back to the state what's not spent. But then they turn around and issue a new one point four for the starting July one.
Okay.
So that's has been our annual allocation. What we don't spend in the years' time, we return to the state.
And the number for public health, the reason it's so small in that same timeframe is?
Can you elaborate?
The Public Health Emergency Preparedness Number.
Oh, the emergency preparedness.
It it shows seventy-nine for the annual allocation, but it shows thirty-one thousand for the current allocation in a six-month period.
Yep, so they did a partial allocation there, and so what we will likely see later in the year, once the fiscal year changes in July or August, there'll be another amendment where they're allocating the remainder of the, what is sort of our annual allocation.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Do we typically exhaust Group B in emergency preparedness funds?
Group B, yes. Emergency preparedness, we have in the past, but we also used to have a position that helped sup- that was doing a lot of those activities. Um, that position um was vacated last year and is not um refilled, and so we're participating in some of these activities, um, and we can bill our time towards this budget line. Um, but I don't anticipate we'll spend all of that because of, for that reason.
And the the top, the coordinated entry, that was not what I was referring to, that the state will make you go through this coordinated entry before you can access.
Certain housing programs.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mm-hmm, yep, so I have these on the list. These contracts aren't yet scheduled for a meeting, but I wanted to just make sure we're having conversation um about them. So we have the coordinated entry contracts. Um, here, we we did a request for proposals a few months ago. We received four proposals back. Three of them, um, Emergency Support Shelter, Family Health Center, and Community House. Those are the agencies we have historically worked with. Uh, I would like to continue to work with those agencies. We also received a proposal from Lower Columbia CAP, and I have them kind of pulled down separate there in the bottom. Um, I would like to move forward with the three that we've been working with. I would like to continue conversation with CAP about what that would look like if we were to move forward with them. I still have some questions about their proposal and their budget and some different programmatic things to talk through. But while I'm having those conversations with them, to see if we can, you know, land on a on the same page, I would like to go ahead and move forward with the coordinate, with the other coordinated entry contracts if if we're in agreement on that. I've listed the amounts there too. You'll notice the twenty-four contracts amounts and then what is what we've agreed to. What I've talked to the providers about, what they proposed in their RFP or what we've, what I've negotiated with them as a twenty-twenty-five contract amount. There.
You kind of base that on activity that they saw last year?
Yeah, yep, exactly.
So we essentially we decide how much we're going to give them. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, so they'll propose an amount and we can agree with that or we can negotiate depending on what that looks like. So.
And so you brought these numbers down from last year due to the numbers that they were dealing with?
Right. Based on, basically based on their, what they actually billed us. It's reflective of, you know, the work that they're doing in the contract. And so we, Family Health Center actually proposed the amount you see there. They were kind of right-sized it on their own and Community House kind of carried over the same amount is what they proposed, but through through conversation with them, we agreed to bring it down to the twenty-five thousand amount.
Good job.
So those are the coordinated entry contracts. The other contracts I have listed there, Emergency Support Shelter, Shelter Operations. We have had a contract, this contract for a number of years. It's historically been about a hundred thousand. In the last two years, we have had an additional component where the county is agreeing to match up to fifty thousand dollars of their private donations. They've done that both two years. So we've matched the fifty thousand in private donations with them. So one question I have is does the board want to continue to do that at the one fifty amount with the fifty thousand match or go back to the hundred thousand amount? So that is a question I have for the board with that particular contract. But we're ready to move forward with that one as well, whenever the board is comfortable in making a decision about that.
On that number, the hundred and fifty thousand is after the match? And and our donation is much of that?
So we provide a hundred thousand for their basic shelter operations and then an additional fifty thousand in match to their private donations. So the hundred and fifty amount is what we have paid to them.
I see, okay.
So their total budget could be four hundred thousand. We just, that's, this is what we're allocating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was the part, they get money from other places. I think the cities do stuff.
They may get, yeah, I think they may get some from Longview. They do get a lot of private support donations. They also have a
Support and we did the gist when that was first done was kind of, we didn't want them just rely on the money. We want, because it had always been out asking for private. And we said, well, if they get fifty thousand in private, we'll match another fifty. And that was kind of the gist behind it.
Yeah.
Well, I I'm absolutely a favor, in favor of making them work for their money. So I like the match money type approach to anything you can make happen for that type of a program.
So just kind of keep it status quo?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Does that work?
Okay.
All right.
I think it's a great incentive.
Do that. And then we have a contract with Housing Opportunities of Southwest Washington. So the first one for the Phoenix House. The county has been involved in funding this particular project for a number of years. It previously was with Family Health Center, although Housing Opportunities has always been involved. They've managed the housing and the vouchers for the units. So this particular project is for individuals who have completed and are exiting an inpatient treatment program and they can come back and live in this kind of a secure living environment and get some assistance with kind of reintegrating into the community, regaining some self-sufficiency, connecting back with you know, employment or school with their children, whatever it may be. So our contract supports the case management for the individuals living at that facility. So we have had a contract, like I said, historically with Family Health Center and it's now with Housing Opportunities for that particular project. So that one's coming up for a renewal consideration.
You know, Gina, if they'll, they'll come in. Because I Family Health didn't want to do it anymore and and Housing Opportunity said, we'll take it over. And when they presented to us, they had some different ideas that they wanted to work through that.
I know
They wanted to run it a little bit different. So I'd be curious on how that's
I'm happy to invite them in to share out. Yeah, I know they did propose they wanted to change the staffing model a little bit. So they have someone there during the day. They also have someone there now evenings and and weekends as well.
I think they had some metrics on numbers that they wanted to achieve is how fast people came through the system or
Yeah, I will invite them in, yeah.
I I I'd be interested in hearing how their changes have worked.
Yeah, because it sounds like it's a lot more than just Housing Opportunity. What they do, what they provide for those people.
Yeah, it's a really neat program and they're always willing to give tours if anyone's interested in going and seeing the facility. It's a neat environment over there. The second contract I have here listed with Housing Opportunities is, would be a new contract. And I don't know if Commissioner Dahl might recall some of this, but when they submitted for funding to support Sunrise Village for the construction costs, there was a small component that they included in that proposal to help them get started with staffing. So they were asking for sixty thousand dollars as like a one-time to help them get started with leasing the units and getting people in the units. So they've completed that construction part and they're now getting ready to lease up the units and have asked if we can move forward with this piece of of that proposal and the award to so that they have that sort of startup and can get going with helping to lease up the units and get people in there. Say they, the ask was a one-time, so I don't anticipate this as sort of an ongoing operational ask, but just in a startup.
Is this the same number that was in the original proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Gina, did you say that you, how did you get a hold of these people? Did they come to you?
So they had submitted in an RFP, a request for proposals. I think it was in twenty twenty-three for the construction costs of Sunrise Village and this startup operational cost. So it was all in one proposal. At that time, the total funding amount was approved. But they, obviously, they weren't ready for this piece until the construction part was done. So now that the construction piece is done, they're ready to move forward with leasing up the units and getting people in them. So this was a part of that project, but it wasn't, we didn't include it in that contract because we just kept it to the construction costs and waited until they were ready for this piece.
How many units is that?
Oh, gosh, forty?
I think it's right around forty. I think that's pretty, pretty close.
I think it's forty units.
This was actually done right before I came in with Commissioner Jay Bush was
Okay. Okay.
You're you're giving us a you'll, we'll talk about them again on a Monday before they come on the agenda.
Yes, and and like I these, what what's on next week is that consolidated contract, the health-related item, that's on for Tuesday's agenda. These other items are not scheduled yet, but I would like to, I would like to move them forward and get them scheduled. But wanted to make sure I'm getting some information out and starting conversations. So if there if there are questions, if you're looking for specific information, please reach out, let me know, so I can get whatever information you'd like to be able to consider it.
Yeah, well, I know the coordinated entry is a reimbursement thing and so they're only getting back what they, what they're billing you for.
Right. And we do plan to bill our state contract for all of that.
Yeah, your state contract is going to pay for basically all of these, right?
For most of them, yeah. The Emergency Support Shelter, we will probably pay with doc fees because yeah, there's a specific doc recording fee that is pretty limited. And so we kind of save that and use that for an emergency support shelter. So that will probably be doc fee, but we'll use our state contract for for a lot of that.
I don't really have any harbor other than I would like to have an update on Phoenix House, just because I know they were going to institute some changes and I'd like to know how they
Okay.
what that's done or
I will invite them in. Okay. Don't hesitate to reach out if you have some questions and I will be back on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. All is well. All is well. I got a couple of things I'm going to bring up next week to talk about and I'll be real quick on this. Resolution from the state from the governor telling departments if they don't get permits out in a timely manner that they get their, they get refunded permit fees. I'd like to talk about that. And I was going to talk about ADOs. We talked about that a little bit today about CEDC. Those are the two things on my mind. Other than that, nothing else, we will adjourn. Let Commissioner Farrell get over where he needs to go.